That's exactly what I was talking about. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the slightly delayed start of our Yountville Town Council meeting for Tuesday, September 17th, 2019. Go ahead and call the meeting to order and ask for roll call, please.
Councilmember Durham Becker?
Here.
Councilmember Durham?
Here.
Councilmember Baller?
Here.
Mayor Dunbar?
Here.
Let it be known in the record that Vice Mayor Dormand is excused.
Thank you. Please join us at the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And we just ended a nearly two-hour meeting with our zoning and design review board, and it took a little time to put the room back to order. So that's why we're starting a couple of minutes behind. But next up, I'd invite adoption of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Eddie, are we going to try the electronic voting tonight, or are we going to do voice votes?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Let's see if we get that screened. There we go. Please vote. Almost. Let's assume. Is that unanimous? Is everybody?
Yeah, mine came and left. Yes. Ah, okay.
We got our agenda adopted. There we go. Public comment on any item that is not on our agenda tonight, if anyone would like to, I had a feeling, that please come on forward.
Good evening. I wanted to share with you some calendars that celebrate Latino heritage. We don't call it month anymore because we've decided to expand into three months. So it's celebrate now it's Latinx heritage.
You were at the Board of Supervisors this morning.
We were. You saw us. So this is our beautiful poster that a young man who grew up here did, and I'll leave you with a copy. He went to schools. He went to Pueblo Vista Elementary and River School, and then he graduated from Justin. Now he plays semi-pro soccer, so as well as being an artist. Anyway, I just wanted to acknowledge that the town of Yountville, even though I didn't ask you for a proclamation this year, the town is actually, in your own way, in our own way, we've been a leader. We've had exhibits that Jim McDonald arranged with Yountville Arts, featuring Latino artists last year. The town gives its space to Latina Women's Conference each year. Samantha has scheduled a lot of movie nights over the years for this time of year that feature Latinx films. So I feel like we're actually a town to follow in some respects. So I didn't feel a need to come and ask you for a proclamation, but I am here to support the Sister City process that Cindy's doing. And what I do want to say is that I was actually told at the Board of Supervisors meeting that we're now up to 40% Latino in the county. I thought we were at 34% in the county, but our young people are 56% Latino. And I feel like there's, as you know, I've said this before, a bit of a disconnect sometimes in our daily lives with diversity in our young people. And California is, our young people are 72.6% young people of color, going back to the 2010 census. And that's pretty much carried forward. So I really believe that we, as a town, should consider adopting in our own way some kind of equity and inclusion values. We're not a diverse town in terms of who lives here, but we sure are in terms of who works here. And it's just a good reflection process. And I think that the Sister City, which doesn't, to my understanding, cost anything, is a great opportunity to plan a field trip. You know, we travel to ballgames and things like that. Seniors go through the college and other places, whether they go on Elder Hostel, or they go, you know, college trip or something. They take trips to other countries, and this is really close by. I want to go, frankly. And can you imagine how empowering that is for some of our residents to be part of a delegation, to go to beautiful beach town with wine and art? Maybe they have to just remember not to drink the water, you know, but without, you know, having it out of a bottle. But this is what we need to do to kind of renorm our systems, that we are in a Latino majority state, and frankly, I love it. So I really, really support this. It doesn't have to be for everyone, but at least to make that opportunity available. And I know Cindy will do most of the work, or, you know, all the work. I fully support it. So go online to nappalatinx.org to see all the events put on by events groups around the county. And we have about 21 on the flyers I just gave you.
Thank you, Debbie. Anyone else on an item not on our agenda tonight? The aforementioned former mayor.
Good evening, Mayor Dunbar, councilmembers. I hope you had an opportunity to read the letter I submitted earlier. I would have gotten it to you sooner, but communications and technology got in the way. I'm back, and I was hoping to renew my request that the town of Yountville enter into an agreement with the town of Totosantos, Baja California, sir, for that Sister City relationship. I think it's timely, and it's important for our Napa Valley culture, the heritage that we all enjoy in terms of the Latin population. I've talked to a number of people who are interested in participating and would be willing to sit on the committee. So with that, and then there was the issue of the little French town that I guess somehow that dropped off the radar, and there's no longer an interest. But, you know, out of respect for that culture and our heritage, you know, I would ask that you consider it and possibly, at the next council meeting, approve that relationship, and we can enter into an agreement to move forward and share these rich cultures and programs and art and wine and food and everything else that we enjoy here in the Napa Valley, and that I'm sure that if any of you have an opportunity, and I know Councilmember Durham has, visit, to visit Totosantos, you'll see the similarities. And I know there are several there that are very eager to come and visit us, so I'm hoping to arrange for that in the near future. Thank you. Any questions?
Well, it sounds like you don't need any of your volunteers for your committee, because Debbie has volunteered you for all the work.
Pretty much.
Yeah. Good. Thank you, Cindy. Appreciate it.
Foundational issue for the council is just some background. The process is pretty straightforward with Sister Cities International, and establishing one Sister City does not preclude you at a later point in time from adding an additional. If the council was to express interest, one of the things I have suggested is that there be a formal Sister City committee, and that, and it appears that there's some level of interest in residents, and that the council would establish that as a formal Sister City committee, so that the work responsibility would not fall exclusively to Cindy, or the town, or the chamber, but that there would be a group that would be responsible for helping to, you know, one, coordinate what those interactions and exchanges might be, and also, secondly, that any fundraising or support that might be necessary would be done. Now, the good news is that the fundraising aspect could be housed under the community foundation, so there's a nonprofit structure. So it's really, from that standpoint, if you'd like, I guess I could use a little direction on what to be bringing you back, if it's something, you know, for formal action at the next council meeting or not.
And we'll, we're not going to be addressing that now during public comment, but we can certainly give you feedback. And we already initiated a preliminary relationship with the correspondence we sent last year, I think it was, with the representatives from Totosantos. So thank you, Cindy. Anyone else on public comment? Seeing no one else come forward. We do have, the next on the agenda, our consent calendar, items A through I. Is there, if there are no questions or comments, is there a motion to adopt this consent calendar as presented?
I make a motion to adopt the consent calendar.
I second.
Please vote.
Mine didn't come up, but yes.
Eddie's too quick on the button over there. So I believe we're unanimous on that.
Yes.
Thank you. So the consent calendar is adopted unanimously. Next up, we have the first of our two presentations, Sheriff's Public Safety Quarterly Report. Sergeant, welcome.
There we go. Okay, we can go to the next slide. So this past, it's even easier, thank you. Help myself. This past quarter, our calls for service went up quite a bit from the prior quarter or this quarter last year. We went from 1,440 calls for service from 924 last year at the same time, so it kind of stepped up a little bit. We took 64 written investigative reports and made 13 arrests. As far as crimes against persons, we had two simple assaults and one weapon-related assault. Speaking to the weapon-related assault, because that always makes me kind of stop for a second and want an explanation, what exactly happened. As far as this incident, without getting too much into the details, it was very unusual up at the North Park, and a subject was contacted by another subject after following both of them down the investigative road. No one was cooperative, and I think it might have been more of a business deal, if you will, that didn't work out. So not something any of the rest of us would typically be too concerned about unless we were caught up in that business deal. Crimes against property, we had nine total thefts this quarter. Shoplifting and open cars accounted for about half the thefts. It did go down a little bit from this quarter last year by a couple thefts. But the resounding theme is still constantly asking people to just be aware of locking cars, taking items of value out of view, and closing garage doors. And I'll speak to that here in a little bit as well, but that is kind of a big deal. Shoplifting, that wasn't unusual looking at past years, just because, again, summer season shopping picks up, tourism picks up, sometimes we have a few shoplifting incidents. Traffic collisions, we had four non-injury, one injury. Traffic stops were 267 stops this quarter. We went up by about a little over 33% on that. Traffic citations were 98 traffic citations. And again, you know, we do try to keep it at about a third for the education or the enforcement over education, two-thirds. But I also leave that up to the deputies if they feel somebody is, not someone who would comply with their request to stop at stop signs or slow down, whatever that would be. So then I have them go ahead and write it down and make a date with them. Parking citations, 96 parking citations. We were involved with several different things, from the Easter egg hunt, art sip and stroll, cycle for sight, and of course, the Rock the Right event, which is typically, draws a lot of notable figures. So we're typically involved in that. The safety tip reminder is definitely late, but I couldn't change it, about school being back in session. But I would like to kind of speak to, I would like to speak to the theft. So we recently, in this last week, we had several thefts from autos, window-smashed burglaries, this time all focused around our resorts. So having the opportunity, thankfully, through Steve DeVino and them putting in cameras around some of their resorts, really helps us out. We're able to see the behavior, get evidence as to who's involved. One thing, just to let you know, we have two different investigative teams actively tracking down the people, and we're pretty sure we know who's involved at this point. So that's a good thing, and we're taking our measures to deal with that. But as well as watching the behavior of the suspects, it's exactly what we've been talking about. They come up, except for shifted out of the neighborhoods. I'm not sure that that's good, but it is what it is. They take a flashlight, they look inside, they look for an item of value. If they don't see anything, they go to the next car. When they do, they break the window. So I talked to town manager Steve Rogers, that I'll be working with Chamber of Commerce to see if we can work with the businesses to see if we can alleviate some of that as well, and also give these folks somewhere to stay.
There's no TOT on that, is there?
Well, maybe if we get a small holding sale here in Yountville, we could work that out.
Any questions of the public safety report?
I just want to thank you for some of the traffic enforcements. I've seen some changes, I think, because of some of the actions that you're doing. It's many of the, you know, it's a challenge with our tourists and visitors who have a cellphone in hand, and, you know, we have big white streets, and they just start walking out, and we have a lot of older population that just kind of slows down instead of stop. So it's a challenge on both ends, so thanks for taking care of that.
Thank you very much.
Have you seen any change in the trending of rideshare drop-offs and pickups happening right in the middle of the street? Is it better, worse, same?
So that'll be an interesting communication. I apologize for not giving you yes or no. I'll start off with no, but. So it's easier to reach out to some of the limousine companies, limousine buses, like the town car companies. They're easy, because we can reach out to them and say, hey, I've personally talked to several of the companies and said, you're in Yountville, we have a lot of people, we want you to come and do business, but I know the last thing you want is one of your drivers to have an accident or hurt or kill somebody. And they're pretty on board with helping us to educate their drivers. Uber, Lyft, some of the other companies, very difficult. How do you get ahold of everybody? So I'm trying to work on that, as well as trying to get some type of messaging out to people that typically do business in the valley, to say, hey, make us a hotspot on the map. If you come here, please pay attention. Some type of kind reference prior to them being educated through a citation, or however that works. But I've, I'll tell you, this last month, I've been busy with that. I was literally just on my way home, coming back to the office the other evening, running late, and I looked down Oak Circle and up on the curve, right in the no-stopping standing, there's an Uber, literally parked on the sidewalk. And so, you know, again, if you're on the sidewalk in a red zone, parked with the sign right in front of you, I'm not sure what else we can do unless we can get a flashing truck that says, "Not here, please." But we're working on it. I do think we will get a saturation point. I really do. I think at a certain point, because I've cited several people a couple of times now, and I've met a ton of people several times. So I think there, we do reach a point where we're meeting enough people where they get it. But I am going to be working on reaching out to some of these companies to try and push out somehow. I'm not sure how they communicate with their drivers.
Well, I know it's challenging. Also, frequently, when I'm using these services, they're out of the area, Sacramento, San Francisco.
Run into that.
And so if we educate in the valley, it doesn't really help.
So that's why I'm wondering, is if they have any type of regional communication? And I do run into that as well, but I've seen several people that are literally Vallejo through the valley, Santa Rosa, some of the same, I just keep running into some of the same drivers. So I'm hopeful, but I just don't know exactly how their system works with that, so I'm going to be reaching out.
Good. Thank you. Appreciate that. Anything else? Thank you very much, Sergeant.
Thank you, sir.
Next up, it does not look like Lindsey Gallagher is here, but we. Oh, there she is. Catherine is sitting up front, that's all. So Lindsey is here. Welcome. We do have a couple folks from Visit Napa Valley that are here to make our next presentation. So Lindsey, welcome. Sorry, didn't see you back there.
Let's see, do I have the? Okay, perfect. All right. I will try to move quickly. Thank you very much for the opportunity for us to give you a little report on our fiscal year, which concluded at the end of June. So we, you can go to the next slide, please. Thank you. There we go. All right. This is a bit of an eye chart, but what I'm hoping you'll see here is that Visit Napa Valley engages in the development, deployment, and stewardship of a fully-integrated plan across multiple channels in our sales and marketing and community outreach efforts. We layer paid, earned, and owned media channels, along with direct sales efforts, to tell a complete Napa Valley story and to strategically drive group and leisure business. This slide will take a look back at 2019, our fiscal year, so July of 2018 through June of 2019. And you'll see that occupancy levels remained relatively flat at just over 70%. However, hotels continue to drive rate with overall RevPAR per available room up 6.2% and overall revenue up 8%. Demand is recovering to keep pace with some of its new supply, and we find ourselves in a pretty good position, relatively speaking, especially as it relates to other destinations out there. All right. Next, you have a snapshot of our revenues and our expenses for the fiscal year that just concluded. Almost 90% of our funding comes from the Hotel Self-Assessed Tourism Improvement District, or TID, which you're familiar with. And additional revenue comes from partnerships and welcome center retail sales. The unincorporated county voted to spend $505,000 of their funding on a paid print and digital advertising campaign, and Visit Napa Valley managed that in conjunction with our agency, Marion Carson. Our direct sales and marketing team efforts account for around 70% of our overall budget. With our, together with our Board of Directors and many of our countywide stakeholders, we recently undertook a strategic planning process this spring, and we have developed a three-year long-range plan, or LRP, and we've updated our vision and our mission statement, and I'll just read those briefly here. So our vision is to elevate Napa Valley as the world's premier wine country experience, and our mission is to promote, protect, and enhance the Napa Valley destination. Next slide, please. Thank you. We utilized an organization called Destinations International and a tool that they have through their Destination Next Future Study and Assessment to do some research, both internally and externally, on where we sit as a destination compared with other destinations. And the good news is that we are in the upper-right quadrant. I know it's a little difficult to read, but we scored very high on strong community engagement as well as being an established destination. So it's a very desirable place to be on a relative basis. At the same time, some of the strategic challenges that we'll have to be thinking about as we go into this three-year plan is to avoid complacency and continue to involve our destination to have an authentic and compelling reason for visitors to come here. Obviously, we're sitting sort of very comfortably at a top of a very nice heat with a lot of the world's eyes on us and wanting to be as successful as we are. That being said, with the potential for some economic softening and a lot of other destinations, quite frankly, getting their act together and doing a better job of speaking about their destination, we're going to have to work a little bit harder to make sure that we stay where we are and that the Napa Valley is iconic and aspirational for visitors from all around the world. So the four strategic goals that we have established, starting now, going into the next three years, relate to strategic marketing and sales, collaborative destination management, proactive partner and community engagement, and organizational excellence. The first one, I'm sure it comes as no surprise, is to focus on strategic marketing and sales. And so we'll do this with consumer research and a rebranding project that we just started a couple of weeks ago. We'll continue to target diverse market segments, as well as diverse audiences in terms of our visitor base. And we will start, for the first time, to work on some sales training efforts to help both our team and our partners' teams on the sales side to sell the Napa Valley destination, again, in anticipation of having to work a little bit harder to earn that business. We're going to take the lead on that this year and help equip our own sales team with messaging and to have that permeate throughout the valley. So in terms of the other two strategic goals, we will have proactive community and partner relations. We had a great campaign in May of last year of Why Tourism Matters. That's an effort that Catherine and other members of our team have overseen, and we saw such success and really traction coming out of that one-week campaign, that our hope is we can expand that into a year-round effort, and we can start to talk authentically and in a meaningful way about the benefits that tourism brings to our communities. So we will look for your help in doing that in the year ahead. And then this is a summary of our fiscal year 20 key objectives. We have a summary of this coming out at our partner conference on Thursday, so everybody will get the full, multi-page version in a couple of days. But it goes without saying that we are going to continue to focus on consumer marketing as well as sales for leisure and group constituents, both domestically and internationally. We will support our destination and our partners through the Guest Information Network, and we will make sure that the lodging and tourism pieces of the puzzle are very good community partners. So we'll have more information, I said, on that in a couple of days. So now I want to take a minute and just focus on what we call our Why Tourism Matters campaign, and talk about some of the things that we're really proud of as stewards of tourism and hospitality here in the Napa Valley. So Visit Napa Valley is the destination management organization that's responsible for promoting our community as an attractive travel destination and enhancing its public image as a dynamic place to visit, live, and work. Through the benefits of tourism, we strengthen the community's economic position and provide opportunities for our residents. And we really value the partnership that we have with communities like Yountville, and we try to sit sort of at the point of inspiration of getting people to come here to the Napa Valley. And we so appreciate all that you do from a tourism and an economic development standpoint to make the visitor experience so compelling for people who come here and they have a positive experience here in Yountville and in the Napa Valley, and hopefully they're coming back again and again to experience this great destination. This is our one-page handout. I think Catherine has given these to you at your seats, but this is really some very positive messaging that we want to make sure we are communicating out there to residents as well as visitors coming here about all the successes that tourism brings. I'll talk about each piece in a little more detail, but on this slide, there are three takeaways that I think are important to point out. We welcomed a lot of people here, and they spent a lot of money here. But in terms of the rates of growth of some key factors, direct visitor spending outpaced visitor growth by nearly two times. So visitor growth was almost 9% from 2016 to 2018. Every two years, we conduct this economic impact and visitor profile study. So the number of people, sorry, the spend, the visitors grew by 9%, but they spent almost 16% more. So what that tells us is that people are coming here, they're staying longer, and they're spending more money. And that is really strategically what we're hoping to help drive here at Visit Napa Valley. In terms of the overnight guests versus the day-trip visitors, again, a really great growth rate there, that overnight guests grew almost 14%, while day-trippers only grew at 5%. So the day-trip growth was less than the growth of overnight guests, which is a statistic that we're, again, proud of and want to continue to grow. And then finally, we are the second-largest employer in Napa County. So the next slide shows you what the most liked aspects of the Napa Valley were. We conducted some consumer research, and it'll come as no surprise that there are a lot of really positive and wonderful things that people who visit us here in the Napa Valley associate with our destination. And we will, we look forward to continuing to make sure that we are getting that message out in an authentic and meaningful way in the year ahead. Next, our Napa Valley visitor breakdown. We welcomed 3.85 million people to the Napa Valley. Around 80% of those were domestic from the United States, and around 20% of those visitors came from outside the United States, from international destination. However, I do want to point out that our goal at Visit Napa Valley is to promote travel to the Napa Valley during non-peak periods. We have what we've called our Cabernet season, which lasts from November through March, and we are encouraging visitors to come visit us at that point in time, and specifically on the Sunday through Thursday timeframe. So it's important to us that we are, if we're bringing more people here, that we were doing so in a sustainable and strategic way in those off-peak shoulder season period, our Cabernet season. So next, you'll see where our domestic visitors were coming from, that 80% that came from the United States. So the gray line at the top, next to each state, lists what their overall spend was, and the green line is the volume of people who came. So obviously, the largest volume of people came from California, followed by Texas, New York, Florida, Illinois, and Washington. At the same time, the spend levels for a state like Florida were the highest on an individual basis. So our team is doing a lot of work with our marketing plan to unpack, number one, who came here, but also how much did they spend while they were here, and we're targeting our marketing efforts accordingly. Next, you have a look at the international visitors. The top country of origin was Canada, and moving quickly into number two is China this year. That's probably ahead of the trade tariff that we're experiencing, but I'll leave that for another day. So Canada and China are number one, and number two, followed by the United Kingdom, Japan, and Australia. That's in terms of total visitation numbers. But again, on the spend level, you see Australia doing more than their fair share in terms of spend per visit on dollars per day, coming in at $260 per person per day. Okay, now let's talk a little bit about the overall economic impact, and you'll see that visitors to the Napa Valley spent $2.23 billion supporting local businesses while they were here. $476 million went to lodging, $480 million to restaurants, and just under $750 million in retail spending. And now we'll just focus on a few highlights of our economic benefit to the community overall. overall. So tourism contributions, go ahead to the next one, thanks very much. There we go. Tourism continues to provide a significant positive economic benefit to local jurisdictions across the Napa Valley. We were able to collect $53 million in TOT revenue. That's the transient occupancy tax, that's around twelve percent on all lodging stays. We collected $18 million in property taxes paid by lodging in local jurisdictions, and 14 million in sales tax, for a total of 85.1 million in tax revenue for the community. We also are the second-largest employer in the Napa Valley. We have almost 16,000 jobs supported by tourism. You see how that breaks out into lodging, restaurants, and retail. And something that I think is a really fantastic figure is the nearly half a billion dollars in combined payroll that went to support those jobs. It was an increase of twenty-seven percent over two years ago when we last did this study. The tourism industry, as I said, remains the second-largest employer. You see jobs for manufacturing and agriculture, lodging, government education, and healthcare, but again, overall, the number-two employer in the county. This is a slide I think Yountville should be particularly proud of, and really, I commend you for the great numbers that you have up on this board. This is how our total TOT collection works with, here within the valley, and obviously for a small population, the $7 million in TOT for Yountville is impressive. We'll go, I'm going to skip ahead one more there, okay? And this, this is just going to show you the TOT growth trend by jurisdiction. Yountville is the green line and sort of the center there, and you see overall a nice, healthy growth in TOT year-over-year. This starts in 2011 on the left, I know it's a little hard to read, and goes through last year of 2018. And then this slide, I think, is a really great snapshot overall. It provides the TOT detail by jurisdiction for Yountville and the other jurisdictions here in the valley, in terms of, first of all, population, then number of hotel rooms, then TOT collected per resident, which is quite impressive at 2,321 for Yountville, TOT collected per room, as well as the TOT as a percent of the general fund, and how that's grown since 2011. And then our last slide takes a nice zoom in on Yountville in particular and looks at where you are in terms of number of hotel rooms, 444, a population of 3,000, give or take, TOT collected per resident, $2,321, 15,680 per room per year, sixty-five percent of city budget, and seventy-three percent increase in TOT over the ten years or so that we've been tracking that. So I know that was a lot, I didn't want to, I appreciate the time, I appreciate your support, and my team at Visit Napa Valley looks forward to working with the team here in Yountville to make sure that we have a compelling Napa Valley destination message, and also that Yountville fits very nicely within what we're saying about the valley overall. So thank you for your support and thanks for the time tonight.
Thank you. I do, before you get away, since I've seen you now in the audience. This last slide, you mentioned the 444 rooms, vacation rentals not included. Do you have any sense of trending about the impacts on, obviously, Yountville, we don't allow short-term rentals, but how is this factoring in? And those that are being rented are contributing tax. The very beginning, years ago, that wasn't the case, but it is now, so what kind of trends are you seeing there throughout the county?
I'm going to ask Catherine to step in on that. She's more familiar with the history beyond five months.
Okay. So the city of St. Helena has a small number of permitted vacation rentals. I believe the permits issued outnumbers the actual sites, so I think it's 23 units, and they do pay TOT.
For short-term, you're talking about?
For short-term rentals. And in the city of Napa, I believe it's 40 that are whole-house permitted rentals, and 60, they have capped it at 160, that are shared. So the owner has to occupy the vacation rental, and it's, it's an effort to help, say, a widow supplement her income, and we know it contributes to keeping somebody company, and they love to be hospitable. So those are the ones we are aware of. We continue to hear anecdotally that you can go on any vacation rental site on a Saturday night and find 1,000 different sites that you could go to. My understanding is the county is increasing enforcement. That was reported at the Board of Supervisors meeting this morning when they were talking about some other issues and workload. So, does that answer your question?
It does. I'm just wondering how, you know, we're seeing what's happening and how we're regulating those impacts here in Yountville, just seeing what kind of trending you're seeing throughout the valley, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I ask you a quick question to either one of you? So for fiscal year 2019, 2020, year-to-date, can you speak to a star report for occupancy? So my concern is demands only, has grown under one percent. Occupancy, I know, in Yountville dropped for fiscal year-to-date. I'm wondering about the rest of the valley, because then I look at supply, which is at 1.3, and I know a lot more is coming on, online in the next 12 months. And all those numbers are great, you showed for Yountville, but, and I'm glad for the valley, but I'm mostly prioritizing Yountville. So if you could speak to year-to-date occupancy, I'd appreciate it.
We just got the August star report this morning, and I glanced at it for 10 seconds before I came here today, but the numbers are quite good for July and August. And we see occupancy going up north of 80 for the valley-wide figure in August. I anecdotally spent time last week with both Visit California and the U.S. Travel Association, and I will say that the numbers nationwide and within California for, starting in July and August, have people nervous, and their trends have, you know, gone in a direction that they haven't seen in a while. That being said, the valley-wide numbers year-to-date, specific to July and August, are even showing double-digit growth in terms of occupancy in August and RevPAR as well. So we appear to be in a good position this summer, heading into our busy season, September and October, of course. And let's just say fingers and toes crossed that that continues. But I think we are the envy of many other destinations out there right now, as close by as Sonoma. And, you know, from, from far and wide, our numbers are still very strong, where others are seeing signs of softening.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
I have a couple of questions.
Oh, we do, so we do have more, Councilmember Muller?
Um, there's a lot of data, I think I found it very interesting looking through it. Can you give us like one overall, what you think is your biggest success this year compared to last year?
I think if you, if we go back to the, and you have this in your handout, I think the growth rate in the overnight guest stay growing at twice the rate of the day-trip rate, the spend levels, you know, growing at a faster rate than the number of visitors. Because really, what, what we're hoping to do, I think, is, as we move ahead, is to make sure that not only are we having a healthy tourism-driven economy, but that we are, that we are providing a benefit to the residents that live here, and that we are not doing this in a vacuum. It's not about just getting a lot more people here. It's about making sure that they have a really great experience while they are here. It's encouraging them to, to stay another night, to dine one or two more times in a restaurant, to visit three or four more wineries, and to really help drive visitation in our non-need periods outside of the season we're in right now. And I think a couple of things from our strategic plan that we're going to be wrestling with going into our new fiscal year, which started in July, one is how do we appeal to millennial and Gen Y travelers? And how do we make sure that we continue to appeal to our core demographic, which is a little bit older, a little bit more advanced in their career cycle with a little more disposable income? How do we continue to really, you know, get those folks to come again and again? But how do we stay relevant to a millennial who may look at the Napa Valley as a place where their parents went and may not find it aspirational as Bali or Mexico City or wherever they're going?
Instagram.
Yes, exactly.
It's like, you know, everyone goes up the valley to the sign.
Yes.
Because they saw it on Instagram, and they have to do theirs too.
That's exactly right. But in addition to that, so they come and take the photo, but often these millennials, maybe they came, I don't know, for a wedding on a Saturday night last summer and visited one winery and took the picture by the sign, and they've checked Napa Valley off their bucket list, and now they're, they're headed off to another destination. So we're really looking through our creative to talk about.
Instagram landmarks.
You can't come for one night, you've got to come many times. And if you went to Calistoga last time, you need to come to Yountville next time around. And have you come to downtown Napa? And have you seen St. Helena? And did you stop at American Canyon? And really having that, the concept of a road trip and a need to continue to come back so that they aren't coming in for 24 hours, checking us off the list and moving on to Lodi or Sonoma or Tahiti or wherever they're going. The other piece of the puzzle is communicating the, a breadth of hotel offerings. Some of the consumer research is showing that we have a reputation for, obviously for being a premium luxury destination, which we are, but that the reputation is that it's too expensive or cost prohibitive, especially to some of those younger travelers. So we just, we need to continue to support those amazing resorts and all of the great inventory that we have of hotels, but we need people to understand that if their price point is less than a certain amount, we probably do still have an opportunity for them to come and visit and see us here. So creatively, those are two of our big challenges, continuing to do what we do well, and why we're putting those great numbers up on the board with our core travelers, but also getting younger and new visitors to consider us as a destination. Thanks.
That's our doorbreaker.
Yes, I have one more question, I'm sorry. Do you have any comparisons between the, either the growth or the lack thereof in tasting rooms versus maybe in brew pubs? I'm just curious, because it seems to me that, you know, I, I believe that tasting rooms have fallen off a bit, whereas I think some of the sports bars and brew pubs have gone up. Do you find that that's true?
We did, we saw some interesting statistics there, and I think, number one, we're so lucky to have so many opportunities here, whether it is the sports bar or a tasting room in an urban area, or visiting a winery in a beautiful iconic spot. We have a lot of that. We did see the number of winery, wineries visited per stay increase from 3.5 to 3.7, I believe. So people are going to more wineries during their visit than they were in 2016. So that's very encouraging, because I believe the trend had gone the other way the last time around when we reported from 2014 to 2016. So we did see an increase in number of wineries visited during a stay, but we also saw an increase, at the same time, of downtown tasting rooms, of other opportunities, breweries and the like. It seems that, while not a big increase, we have reversed that declining trend with wineries from our data. Catherine, do you have anything else on that?
Nope, that was perfect. Thank you.
Thank you both for being here.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it.
We do have one public hearing for this evening. It's to consider adoption of a resolution approving a use permit amendment for the exterior display of merchandise associated with Arena Gallery and Gardens at Washington Square. We have Daniel and Sandra moving up for the staff report prior to the public hearing. More furniture moving needed. Okay.
Hello? I'm excited to be giving my first presentation to you. So we received an application for the exterior display of merchandise.
Yeah.
We've received an application for the exterior display of merchandise for Arena Galleries and Gardens at 6975 Washington Street, also known as Washington Square. Arena occupies Suites D102 and D103 of Washington Square, which are interior-facing units to the courtyard. And the applicant has indicated that they experience a lot of difficulty attracting passersby to the business because of their location there and their lack of street frontage. There's currently very little in the way of visual indications that would let pedestrians know that there's an art gallery on site, even though they do participate in the Wayfinding Sign program. And so to remedy this, the applicant is proposing an amendment to their use permit that would allow for the exterior display of merchandise, specifically for sculptures. So first, for definitions, a public display of merchandise is defined as the placement of items by a retail establishment that are goods sold or representative of goods sold at a location on private property. Public displays of merchandise have been approved in the past for multiple businesses in town, including Overland, which is now JCB, and the Napa Valley Toy Store. And the sculptures proposed here are all representative of the goods for sale in Arena Galleries and Gardens, and so they do satisfy this requirement. And with that in mind, I'd like to emphasize sort of the uniqueness of this particular case for a moment. Though the application is for an exterior display of merchandise, because this merchandise happens to be art, I believe that it provides the town with a unique opportunity to increase the amount of public art available to visitors and residents, while also helping ensure the success of a local business. So here's a site map, and on this map, you can see the proposed placement of the sculptures. The applicant has proposed that three of the sculptures, and it's a little different from the staff report that you might have read, we got a little bit of a change for one of the sculpture locations today, but it's very similar to the one that was originally proposed, and it's updated here on the presentation and in the packet that you have. So on this map, you can see the proposed placement of the sculptures. The applicant has proposed that three of them would be located immediately adjacent to the business and also facing the interior courtyard of Washington Square. These would really only be visible from the interior courtyard, as well as the paths leading to the courtyard. And so the exterior display of merchandise in this case would be very similar to other instances around town of private artwork that are placed on private property, like Bardessono and Petit Logis, so it would very much fit into that aesthetic that's already been established. Oh, excuse me. It's important to note that this is not, it is not proposed that any of these pieces form part of the official art walk here in town, but there is an opportunity in the future for the piece facing Washington Street to do so. So that's that fourth sculpture that I, that is not interior to the courtyard, it's on the landscaped median between where Gerard Gallery is and Washington Street. And so there's an opportunity in the future for this piece facing Washington Street to form part of the art walk. The business owner, as well as the Yountville Arts Commission, have both expressed interest in this arrangement, so I'm hopeful that that could happen if it was so desired. And staff supports the addition of public artwork to the north end of town, as there is significantly fewer pieces of art found there. You can see on this Yountville Art Walk map, there is a lower density of pieces of art at the north end of town. And on the topic of the art walk, the nearest official art walk piece is Stacked, which is at the adjacent North Block property immediately next to Arena. In red here, you'll note that I've highlighted the signage that we use for the art walk. Art walk pieces all have uniform signage indicating their inclusion in the art walk, and they're all marked on the official art walk map that you've just seen. For these reasons, staff does not believe that the placement of a sculpture in front of Washington Square would cause confusion for residents or visitors on this score. And staff does support a condition of approval that the signage for these pieces be significantly different from, from the art walk. Just trying to scroll down here. That's all right. Okay. Excuse me. So the proposed sculptures range in size from 27 to 89 inches. There are mock-ups here on the presentation, as well as in your packet. The applicant's preferred method of installing the sculptures would be for them to be self-weighted, and all of the pieces are a significant enough weight to allow for this. However, staff recommends that a condition of approval be that each sculpture features a concrete pad similar to what is seen on art walk installations because of the close pedestrian, the close proximity to pedestrian walkways. These pads will allow for a higher level of security. The pieces will be rotated as sales allow, because they will be for sale, being public display of merchandise. It's envisaged that this would result in a six-to-12-month turnover approximately, and staff does not suggest a condition of approval based on the schedule of rotation. And also, since the artwork will be representative of the business's collection of contemporary art, staff is comfortable giving the business the discretion to choose any replacement pieces. However, council may wish to include guidelines for the type of artwork allowed. To conclude, the code allows for the exterior display of merchandise, though this application presents a unique set of conditions, because the merchandise happens to be art. For this reason, at least part of this application poses a policy decision for the council of, you know, which pieces to approve or whether or not to require that that piece on Washington Street forms part of the art walk. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Rena Charles, the Director of Galleries at Arena.
Not yet, you don't.
Oh, sorry. Apologies.
Very nice report, thank you, and well done. But we get to ask you questions first, and then I open the public hearing, and then we get to hear from her. So questions in the staff report, Councilmember Muller?
A couple of questions. So the, in the resolution, it says that the, the plan is for the sign to be significantly different than the art walk. So is that a ministerial item, or does that go to the ZDRB? So is that a ministerial item or does that go to the ZDRB?
It does not go to the ZDRB because it's exterior display of merchandise, which isn't regulated by the ZDRB.
Where's the sign?
Let me clarify a little on this one. We're talking about those small plaques, and we don't treat them by definition as signage. So I think what staff is recommending is that the look and feel and the logo of those would be distinctly different than that used, so maybe signage creates a little more impression.
So that's a ministerial approval then?
Yes.
By staff? Okay. That answers, that question, that's all I have for now.
Councilor Durham?
Can you clarify? So this is a change to the use permit, correct? And I forgot to ask, and I have to ask, I'm sorry. Are they part of the employee parking management plan then, already?
They are enrolled and they have two off-site locations. They were pulled in outside of the use permit before the council, but when they came to occupy the space.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that. So look, I, I'm confused here, and so Hi Ho Silver is part of Arena or part of the art walk?
It's part of the art walk. It's a place that has, is on loan from Arena.
And the reason that that sign is not a display of merchandise for sale, even though it says you could buy it for sale at Arena, is because the art walk signs give you the information on how you can purchase it?
Well, it's part of the formal art walk program, which is a curated program where they, the pieces are selected, they undergo a placement decision, they're under a contract for a certain amount of time, and they have those plaques, so.
Very good.
Yes.
Now, wasn't, there's been art displayed in Washington Square already, so they're coming back because they want the art on the street as well?
Well, this came to our attention because they had placed a piece at Washington, on Washington Street, and we let them know that that's an item that requires an exterior display use permit, and so they removed it during the time they worked on submitting an application. We asked to see their plans for the property as a whole to understand the, the number and placement on site. However, this places that are interior, or the artworks that are interior-facing are not as great a concern. That's why we liken them to the pieces at Bardessono, et cetera. It's really the piece on the street that has that public-facing vantage point.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Questions? Councilor Doran Becker?
And Sandra, is it the one that is on the street that is being considered by both the Arts Commission and the applicant to become a part of the art, art walk?
Yes, we understand from both parties that there, they've been in discussions.
Okay. Thank you.
So I've got three questions. You referenced in your report, Daniel, I'm not sure which of you, the merchandise for, having exterior display of merchandise for sale, you say is already permitted in our code. Is that what I heard you say?
Yes, that's correct.
I don't know that we have a condition where this is actually fairly substantially moved away from the business itself. The, the references that I, I heard you mention, the toy store and Overland, were literally at the front door, right? So do we discern the difference there or?
We do, yes. Items that are portable must be located within five feet of the door. The idea is you can have that, you can bring pieces in and out each day, but it does provide a provision to have it distant from the store, approved as part of the use permit.
Do we have any other examples of it being distant from the store?
No. No, we only have the three examples in town, and one of which was a replacement, Overland to JCB.
Yeah, and so those, those go in every night?
Mm-hmm.
And, okay. And it's also.
This would be a very different use of the provision for exterior display of merchandise, and that's why we've created the analogy to the artwork, trying to, if, if you're prone to approve it, providing conditions that would distinguish it from that program and not allow excessive signage that is beyond what normal other businesses are granted in terms of business identification signage.
So you're trying to find a balance between art walk and not art walk in terms of they can't just put up whatever Arena branding that they want. It has to be compatible to the aesthetic that we've created, even though it's not a part of the actual art walk.
Correct, yes.
So.
It's really a plaque to identify the piece rather than to fully advertise the business.
Right, I get that. And I think also, Daniel, in your report, you talked about it's at the discretion of the business to rotate these out when they want and to whatever they want. We're looking at four options they're presenting to start with potentially, but we are not controlling it like the Art Commission, Arts Commission does in terms of what is being visually displayed.
That's correct, though. That is up to council. You could place conditions on, on the rotation, the schedule, the type of artwork if you so desired.
Okay.
Mayor, since kind of the art walk is well-versed in my blood, just to clarify a little bit here, if the council makes the determination that it wants the piece on Washington to be part of the art walk, then that falls subject to all of the criteria of the art walk, including that the Arts Commission is responsible for the final selection. So that would be one of the things that the Arena Gallery. We have had a positive working relationship with Arena where they have sponsored some other pieces that have shown up in other areas, but that's, that's where the, the fine-tuning, if you want to look at this, is if the Washington site is in the art walk, it needs to be fully in the art walk under the auspices of the Arts Commission under what we have. We have a private property participation agreement. As we may know, ironically, the only piece we've ever really had any issues with in terms of theft or damage happened to be a related piece that you may recall from, some of those are Three Lambs on the Lamb. But I think those are something for us to look at. So you may want to separate the Washington space slightly different and treat the three interior. So it's just, again, you may not. You may be okay with all four, but we are pointing out that that is a point of distinction, and for our purposes, it either needs to be in the program completely or it's not as far as the art walk is concerned.
Right. And I'm a little concerned about, I think, Sandra, the way you described it, is there's been discussion between the Arts Commission and the, the business owner, but there's no commitment. What I'm also getting at is there's a financial component to being in the art walk. There's a percentage of a commission for sale, which, you know, I'm sure the business would rather not have to share the profit. But if it's, looks just like every other art piece that's part of the art walk, and that is part of the, the kind of public benefit of letting that display happen, that would need to be a component as well, so.
Yes, and this application was submitted with the desire to have these as four private pieces, not involved in the art walk. It took us several months to make this application complete and to identify all of the locations and everything with them. It was during that time we were contacted by the Arts Commission, who had an interest in the property. So at that point, we reached out to the applicant, and they indicated that, yes, they'd been contacted, yes, they had an interest. But we were proceeding on the application outside of the fact that there was any level of art walk discussion, and, and at this point, there's no decision, which makes it difficult, but we're raising it for your information.
Right, okay. And the only change to the conditions are adding concrete pads? Is that what I heard?
That's correct.
For additional security? Okay. Those are all the questions I had. Any other follow-up questions from the councils? Councilmember Muller?
One last question. I notice a lot of times when we do these use permits, there's a inspection or it's contingent for provisional period. We didn't seem to, there's no language like that in this, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Did you want to ask why there isn't any language in there?
You know, the mayor would like for me to ask, maybe, why there isn't this time. I had to form an afraid.
The natural follow-up.
This is different from a normal use permit that's subject to annual monitoring. It comes at a lower application cost and a lower annual subscription, so while we do check in on, on it from time to time, it's not the same as a typical use permit. And that's why we've treated that in this manner, but we can always include a provision if there's any uncertainty as to the length and ongoing nature of this if approved.
Okay, so because the outdoor display does have a provision for inspections that you normally do. And I did one more question. Was there a reason that you said, I think it's under 5C, that the exterior display shall consist, shall consist of four sculptures and not consider language, shall consider up to four? I mean, if they don't have a fourth one out there, they're in violation of the use permit?
No, we haven't thought of that. But the, we don't want to have an empty pad if that can be the goal, and once you put the pad, it can remain empty. We know the art walk has taken provisions to have temporary places put in place. It really doesn't benefit the, the public streetscape if pads are empty.
Okay.
I do have one last question for Gary. In terms of precedence here, if we say this is okay to put for-sale merchandise a distance away from a business, just because it's art, what does that do, if anything, in terms of someone who has something that they consider art that we don't consider art?
So the public display of merchandise, I guess, outside of the store, still requires a use permit for all those businesses, so they would have to come in separately and apply for that, and you could independently review that evidence and come to a different conclusion on a future application. So I don't think it has presidential value.
Okay.
And I think to that point also, Mayor, is whatever, whatever they're wanting to display has to be something that they're actually selling in their business.
Okay. I think that's it for questions right now. I'll go ahead and formally open the public hearing and invite our applicant representative to come speak to us. Welcome.
Hi.
If you could lower that microphone down just a little bit.
Sure, I'm a little short.
Great.
Okay. Good afternoon. Thanks, Dan. So I am the Director of Sales with Arena Galleries. I've been with Arena for five and a half years now, and just a really great company that I've come to love to represent and grow with and expand over the years.
If you could just share your name for our public record too.
Sure, Rena Charles.
Thank you.
So first, I just want to start with just the gratitude that we have that you all are hearing us this evening for this request and for your support in working with us. We're open to all of the possibilities. Our goal is to create a more immersive experience in Yountville, and of course, in line with the city aesthetic. You may have known us from Masonry. Our founder was, our founder of Arena was the founder of Masonry, and with our sale and move from Masonry, one thing we lost were the outdoor sculptures that we found that guests so enjoyed and so loved. And it's funny, every time I pop into the old space, I hear people asking about the artwork, so it's nice to have that legacy. So our, in addition to our goal, we would like to support the effort to drive traffic to the Northern Block or, as all the kids are saying today, Noyo, so colloquial nickname. And our galleries have participated at the art walk over the years. Notably, some have been mentioned, the Jed Novat, Chaos Papaloma. Our owner, Michael Polanski, was instrumental in bringing that to the town and raising funds and, and part of the donations there. Also, Hi Ho Silver, that's right outside the Town Hall. A few other sculptures that have since sold, and then, of course, our infamous Altogether Now Dancing Sheep that were kidnapped. So we are open to any partnerships to make this work, and Monumental Public Sculptures in our wheelhouse. We curate the Sculpture Gardens at Auberge. That's an 80-plus sculpture garden there. We also have just installed an artwork with the Arena Art Walk Harvest Inn. We are in talks to revamp that space and also, not quite sculpture, but we have artworks at Single Thread Farms in their suites. So we are, you know, it is in our wheelhouse to work with different hospitality partners and, and, you know, it's our goal to drive traffic, create those Instagram moments, create those, that more immersive atmosphere while representing our gallery and the artist.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions of our applicant?
Just one.
Councilmember Doran Becker?
Hello, Rena.
Hi.
I just wanted to confirm that the, the conversation that you're having with our Arts Commission is, is something that you are interested and accept the fact, the terms of what the Arts Commission input and everything would be?
Yes, we are 100% interested in, yeah, whatever we can do to help support that.
Well, I think that would be a good idea because there's a win-win situation that they also would give more exposure to, to your gallery because of your participation. So anyway, thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I do want to acknowledge there were two public comments were received by email. Kimberly Cook and James, last name blacked out, but it still says Chair of the Yountville Arts Commission, so I think we might know who that is. But those are in the record. Kim, did you have anything to add? So any other members of the public? No more, no more public? Okay. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and invite discussion and consideration by the council. Who would like to begin?
Start.
Councilmember Muller?
Make sure I've read all my findings here, and I think I've cut the last one down here, so. I think this, I'm willing certainly to give this a try. I remember when we first talked about our outdoor display of merchandise, I really thought there would be just all this stuff popping out of all these buildings and businesses, and it really hasn't. It really has kind of managed itself quite well. So I am certainly willing to give this a shot and see how it goes. I'm also open to possibly considering a, a two-year review. So those are my thoughts, and I can make all the findings.
Thank you. Councilmember Durham?
I'm, I'm fine with all the findings and all the work that you've put in. It's true, I am fine with findings. I would like to say, though, in, in respect to the question that was asked about it just being changed out on its own, that I think it, I would like to go on record saying it'd be highly beneficial for them to participate with the art walk, being it is in the public right of way, being it is, could be an integral part of that pub, art walk as well. And by being a part of the art walk under the Arts Commission, a lot of the concerns and questions that were raised would automatically be covered by the town. So I do support this.
Thank you. Councilmember Doran Becker?
I also support it. I can find, I, I can approve it through the findings, and I encourage you to make that agreement with the art walk. I think that it would be beneficial for both you and for the town, and I'm delighted to see more artwork in the north end of town, so that's, that's how I feel.
Thank you. I will say I agree with the concrete pads. I think we need that security as well as just to protect the sculptures as well as the people that pass nearby. At first, I was really concerned that we're talking about a merchandise for sale that's really not at the business, but I do see this as having a public benefit, being art. What I actually am going to require, though, for my support, that the Washington Street frontage sculpture is a part of the art walk, that it does fall under that oversight in terms of approval by the Arts Commission. I don't think the three interior pieces need to be because they are much more related to the business and not on public display as much. It, it does alleviate a concern that I would also have about, we already deal with, what is art? What is appropriate art? I know that there are some very amazing, very contemporary, exotic. Uh, I know that there are, uh, some very amazing, very contemporary, uh, exotic, whatever other terms you'd like to use, types of art that you have in the gallery that may be a little bit outside what the Arts Commission typically does. Doesn't mean it's a bad thing, but I just want us to protect what is on such a public display, um, at that part of town. So I'm fine with the open rotation, uh, even though we typically would ask for a longer term, 18 months or so unless it's sold. But I think that that's something that can be discretionary for the business, so I wouldn't put that as a condition. But I would, uh, request that we require the concrete pads for, uh, security, that we, uh, require that that west-facing, Washington Street-facing sculpture be a part of the art walk with Arts Commission. And I put approval in quotation marks on my notes because I don't, being a business, I want to respect the fact that the business owner and, um, those working for the company have a level of discretion to choose what, they might have a new artist that you're really promoting and you want that out there and, um, but I do think the Arts Commission gives us a layer of, um, kind of a, uh, a jury to make sure that it is appropriate for public display. So, um, I guess I'm maybe crafting a motion to, um, at least some of the components of a motion to have that one piece part of the art walk, uh, including the same signage, the same commitment to, uh, commission, uh, upon sale, allowing the open rotation to be decided by the business owner. And then the concrete pads, I think, are the, the last additional condition of approval that I would, uh, suggest to the council for consideration. So, um, with, with all of those things in place, I could support a motion. Comments from the council on that?
That sounded like a motion.
I, I have one comment. I think it, doesn't it already have the, the pad in here? Didn't I see that?
Condition D.
Yeah, it's already there.
So that's fine.
Yeah, okay.
So.
Your only, uh, motion is that the sculpture on Washington Street be part of the art walk. Otherwise, it's all okay. I'll make that motion.
Do we need to read that resolution specifically?
You know, I'll defer to staff if this condition looks enough and if the applicant's all right with it as well. What I have is the sculpture facing Washington Street shall be made a part of the town's art walk no later than, if you wanted to put a deadline in, from the effective date of this resolution.
And would the, that language be sufficient to know that that means approval by the Arts Commission and commission percentage? And that would also potentially fall, I don't know if it gets into town's insurance and all that other stuff?
Yeah, so that's what I was asking the town manager. I don't think it's an ordinance, but it is an official policy.
And, and we do have a formal art walk participation agreement, so maybe the motion should be, be a formal part of the official town art walk administered by the Arts Commission, including the, um, property participation agreement.
And a question for the town attorney. There's also item five E. It says the sculptures shall feature signage that distinguishes them from the art walk. So we also need to modify that.
For the one sculpture at least.
Maybe you can say the three internal sculptures shall feature signage that blah, blah, blah.
And I need to clarify the, it needs both a property participation agreement, which would be the landlord providing, and then the artist participation agreement, which would be what the, uh, gallery would produce for that spot.
We're watching Gary frantically write this all down.
All right. So what was the signage requirement?
That the three interior have distinct signage that is.
From the art walk.
From the art walk signage and that the west sculpture would, would need to comply with the, all the conditions of the art walk.
All right, I think that's a separate condition. So for this one, sculpture facing Washington Street shall be made a formal part of the town's art walk program, subject to the Arts Commission jurisdiction and property participation agreement, no later than a certain date from the effective date of this resolution?
Property participation and. Your microphone wasn't on.
Property participation agreement and artist participation agreement.
And then Gary, I think I'm hearing you say a separate condition would be about the three.
On page three of the resolution.
Five E. The three interior sculptures shall.
That's right. The sculptures other than the one facing Washington Street?
That's another way to say it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Councilmember Mueller, is that clear in your motion?
I would, I would just say the three interior, but.
That's fine.
Because, you know, you could have another sculpture in the interior facing Washington Street.
Let's go with three interior, adjacent to the business.
There we go.
So is that your formal motion?
I make that motion, formal motion with those, um, changes.
Do you formally push the button as a motion?
Oh, I kind of get out of lots of pages here. Yes, I can formally do that. Okay, done.
And is there a second?
I'm happy to second, but the button didn't come up.
I hit, I hit the button and maybe I'm now seconding it.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second, I know that.
Who is the seconder?
I am. I know you had agreed up. Please vote.
Hit it fast. It disappears.
Are you saying yours worked? Perfect.
Do we need to switch screens?
Oh, sorry.
It does pass unanimously after a dramatic, dramatic pause. So thank you very much. Uh, thank you for the discussion. I appreciate the input from our Arts Commission as well. You get to go back and share that good news, right?
Yay.
Thank you. Daniel, thank you again for your presentation. We now have two administrative regular items. Uh, the first one, introduction and waiving of a reading on an ordinance regarding the town water discontinuation for non-payment policy. As soon as we transition over, we'll get to that.
Mayor, council, just a brief introduction. Um, I know you all are familiar who's presenting, but the folks in the audience may not. But, um, Celia King is our finance manager and will be presenting this, so it will be her first presentation to the council. We have several firsts tonight.
I didn't think you were just waiting around all night just to sit through the whole meeting.
Oh, it looks like my item may have cleared the audience, so it's still important. So, good evening, mayor and council members. Senate Bill 998, or SB 998, uh, is a new law as of September 2018 regarding water service discontinuation for non-payment. Staff's goal is to implement the changes stemming from this new law by January 1st, 2020, which is one month in advance of the required implementation date of February 1st, 2020. So shown here are the main requirements for complying with SB 998, and these are outlined in a bit more detail in the staff report. The discontinuation policy being presented tonight includes certain required components. Will be provided in multiple languages, available on our website, and also available upon request. This is showing a comparison of, um, a sample typical timeline, um, of how SB 998 will change our current process. Basically, SB 998 will, um, provide a longer time period that a utility account will be delinquent before discontinuation of water service can occur. Also, there is an increased amount of customer outreach that town staff will be making to help the customer avoid the discontinuation of service. And lastly, just a, an informational snapshot of some current water customer statistics. And a highlight here is that on average, 94% of our customers pay on time. About 448 customers are using online bill pay or auto pay, which is great, and we are, uh, promoting that in our monthly utility billing. So that's basically it. If there are any questions, I will be happy to answer them.
So this is mandatory? So.
And we have to do it within a month.
Yeah. So your, your, your recommendation is spot on.
Yeah.
No questions? Are there any? Councilmember Mueller?
No, I was just going to make a motion, so go ahead.
I want to make one comment and through reading through this whole thing, thank you very much, is that the water, uh, payers choose how we contact them as well through the process. So I want to make sure everybody's very clear on that as well, because we've talked about, uh, communication in the past.
I just want to share, this has also been a great learning and developmental opportunity because, um, as some of you may recall, we used to be on a bimonthly time period, and then during the drought, we switched to monthly. And at first, everybody thought that was going to be a ton more extra work, and I still may find some folks that tell me it's still more work. But I think one of the positive aspects of that, except for the real problem accounts, is we're not dealing with bills that start reaching 300, 400, and 500, which we were having in the past with a bimonthly bill. And as you can see with that extended timeline. And also, it was a great opportunity for us with our, uh, some new team members to look at our policies, programs, and including, you know, establishing deposits for new accounts, really talking about how do we work with new people coming in. So, good news, bad news is while we do have to comply with this law and it gives us a framework and we get to pick the pieces out that are worth for Yountville, um, it, it's given us a good opportunity for our team to look at our internal processes. And I think, uh, with Celia and Priya and the team's help, we've cleaned up and we have a better understanding internally for why and how we do things as well. So a little more of an editorial to share some behind the scenes work that is happening that a lot of you may not always see in terms of how and why things get to where they're at.
Right. Well, and I, I also recognize this, well, basically eliminates the possibility of, uh, an inadvertent shut off, that somebody just happened, they'd be traveling for a couple months and forgot to pay their bill, and they come back and their service is discontinued. There's, with all that outreach and the notice schedule.
There'll be a bit more time for them to catch up.
You really have to be trying not to pay your bill.
Exactly.
Right. Okay. Thank you very much. Motion, did I hear?
No, there is one.
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number 19 dash four.
Introduce and waive the reading, actually.
First, I use, oh, I have to say it first.
No, but it, okay. I, I thought you were going to say adopt the ordinance, but we're introducing and waiving the reading of it.
Right. I was just going to make a motion that we introduce and waive the reading of ordinance number 19 dash 487, in ordinance to town, council of town of Yountville, amending Title 13 of the Outfield Municipal Code regarding the water system.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. And we will wait for the screen to vote. Do we have a screen? All in favor?
Aye.
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 All four. We'll get it right on the, on the record.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nicely done. Priya's next. Our next item we're going to introduce and waive a reading, I have a feeling, about the collection of unpaid accounts receivable. We have a trend going on here.
Good evening, mayor and town council. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. So I'm here to talk about, um, uh, introducing, waiving the first reading regarding unpaid, um, accounts receivable. So as I've mentioned in my staff report, the town collects, um, accounts receivable from our customers, and we make sure that there are plenty of outreach to receive the payments. We utilize different methods, whether that's phone calling, uh, sending out invoices. And, uh, really what this, the intent of this, um, ordinance is to give the town the authority to utilize a third-party collections agency in the event that we need to do that. As I've mentioned, we really do make every effort to contact all of our accounts receivable to receive that revenue. With that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you. You may have just set the record for short of staff report. Any questions on this item? We have no more members of the public, so. Sergeant, we'll call you a member of the public, just.
Thank you, sir.
You still have nothing to say though, right? Okay. Uh, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
I make the motion that we, um, introduce and waive the first reading of ordinance number 19 dash 488, adding chapter 1.26 of Title 1 of the Outfield Municipal Code regarding collection of unpaid accounts receivable.
I second. I don't have the option.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes now, so thank you very much. Do we have any staff informational reports?
No additional reports, other than to various parts of the community is well aware that the Fall Micro Sealing and Surfacing Project is en route. So that's a good public investment in our streets and roads.
And on behalf of Samantha, I'll just bring up that Yountville Days is on Saturday, October 5th, 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Close enough?
Yep, no, four.
Four o'clock, yeah. But being a Saturday and we have parade entries, we have chili cook-off entries, and much, much more.
Two bands.
Yes. Okay, so, uh, council meeting reports, comments. Uh, the flood control, water conservation district board meeting today has, uh, nothing of importance for Yountville, I will say. There was a budget amendment made, but, um, anyway, Uvalo Waste Management Authority? Is there a report?
Uh, no, we've got, uh, our next meeting's coming up in October.
All right, thank you. League of California, California Cities update. I will recognize that, uh, Councilmember Dornbecker is going to be, uh, becoming the North Bay Division President at the annual conference coming up in about one month. I will also be taking over as president of the league at that same conference. I think several of us are going to be there. And Steve, have you started? Is it this year coming up or is it the year after that? You'll be president of the city managers.
I will be vice president and then president.
Right. First vice president coming up. Right, okay. So Yountville's taking the league by storm. A good storm. That's my update for the league right now. Any other reports or announcements from council?
What?
Yes.
The parking ad hoc hit the ground running hard this week and very excited about the participation with the chamber and, uh, the many businesses throughout the community. So our next meeting is going to be in November.
Thank you. And also, uh, the cannabis ad hoc committee, the vice mayor and myself, will be contacting staff to have an, uh, a meeting coming up in the not-too-distant future.
It's on my list as well, and I will remind everybody that the Cannabis Ad Hoc Committee ceases to exist and will now be the Cannabis Standing Committee. So we'll just, for that clarity, and it will mean that our next meeting is subject to the Brown Act as we move forward because we no longer fit the interim time period for duration.
Okay.
Just a reminder on that.
I also wanted to acknowledge that, uh, the vice mayor did leave, uh, earlier this evening to attend the Napa Unified School District 711 Committee that is considering closing, uh, two small schools, one of them, Yountville Elementary School, the other, Mount George, which is in Coombsville. Uh, so it was very important that she be there. Uh, we also have local, um, resident Eric Knight and, um, local, we'll call him honorary resident Eric Housley, that are also representing, uh, on that committee. They were expected or are expected tonight to be, uh, potentially voting on action that would be, um, their recommendation that would go to the Board of Trustees at the trustees' meeting on October 24th. Don't know how that conversation's going tonight, but all indications are, based on the district staff recommendation, that they will be recommending keeping open Alta Heights and West Park, but closing Yountville and Mount George. So we'll find out after that meeting tonight if that's the recommended, recommendation from the committee as well. Uh, and I would just recommend if anyone, uh, wants to continue to advocate on behalf of Yountville or any other issue, that, uh, they focus that attention on the Board of Trustees because it will be in their hands for a decision, uh, in a few weeks. I believe that's all of our business for tonight, Steve. I believe that's all of our business for tonight. Steve?
Just following up your one informational item, is there any direction with regard to the sister city or not?
What kind of, do you need formal direction? You need a head nod from us? Is that what you're asking?
Well, if you'd like me to bring back an item entering into the formal relationship, I can do that. I mean, it's an administrative or if there's a consensus direction. Because the, from a staff perspective, what we would recommend is that you also establish the formal sister city committee so that it not just be a staff-dependent or a chamber-dependent. But I mean, I can bring that back for you as an, you know, a simple item for October 1st.
I would recommend that we do that. Is everyone comfortable with that?
Yes, I am.
Okay. All right, thank you. And it doesn't have to be a date certain, if for some reason it's after October 1, that's fine. But in an upcoming meeting.
I think, given the feedback that we have in the identification, one of the key criteria that I had in working with the residents that were interested, I mean, you guys are familiar with me using the term, there needs to be a there there. We need some, the committee needs to be the there there to help us provide it. And we have indication, so.
Yeah, thank you. We do have a closed session item to adjourn to now. So, I'll go ahead and adjourn to closed session with the item listed, Conference with Legal Counsel, Initiation of Litigation. Do we anticipate any reportable action?
We do not.
Okay. For those of you who don't stay tuned in, thank you for watching this evening. Thank you for watching. And...
Well done, Eddie.
We will be eventually adjourning to our next meeting of October 1. We're going into closed session now.